Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, November 25th at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we're having a series of committee meetings. The first one being the Committee of the Whole. And we have two guests from the Athens County Economic Development Council with the annual report. So, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm Sarah Mars-Maxfield, the Executive Director of the Athens County Economic Development Council. And I've brought with me our Assistant Director, Molly Fitzgerald, who's sitting here in the audience. And we appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening. So I wanted to just give a basic update for activities that have occurred over the last year and then give you all a little bit of a snapshot of what's happening 2020 and beyond as far as projects go and things that we're involved in that we're currently working on. So if we look at 2019, we've assisted local businesses to grow and expand their operations. We've been facilitating the creation of the Downtown Redevelopment Districts that exist here within the city. We've been securing investments for economic development projects in the county. We've implemented educational programs that create a better understanding around the importance of economic development and how it works in our communities. We have spearheaded the efforts around broadband expansion in Southeast Ohio. And we provide educational opportunities for entrepreneurs on a monthly basis. Also, we support talent retention efforts within the Athens community. And we manage the TIF and the city and the county revolving loan funds. Just a few of the examples of the work that we've done. So let's kick it off with the good stuff. So in 2019, the ACEDC has secured over $3 million from state and federal sources. All of this funding went directly to companies to assist them or to upgrade infrastructure that was necessary for business development, for job retention and creation. So the number there, outside sources, this is all state and federal dollars, nothing that was local, no tax credits that were local, but everything that we brought in to leverage funding, 3.12230 million dollars. This just gives you a little bit of a visual breakdown. So on the left-hand side, you have the Business Development PIE. And we're looking at Jobs Ohio funding at 1.3 million dollars that we brought to our community this year. Tax credits, those were historic preservation tax credits that we brought of a little over a million dollars. And then an ODOT 629 grant to do some upgrading on roadwork construction on Poston Road to facilitate the growth of companies located in the industrial park. On the other side, we have brownfield assessments at 148 and change. We brought in $78,000 this year from Appalachian Regional Commission to do our work on broadband feasibility in Southeast Ohio. And then we have other various sponsorships and monies that we pulled together to facilitate and support economic development educational opportunities. So I'm going to do a little bit of a spotlight on a few of our companies. I sent council some documentation earlier in the day. That is, just for your reference, you don't need to have it open for the presentation. But I wanted you all to know how we came to the numbers that we have for economic impact in these projects. The project that you probably are most familiar with is the Stewart-McDonald Project. We've been working on this for a little over two years now. They are just very close to moving in and into that new building. So we've been helping with them for many years prior to the expansion as part of our general business retention and expansion program where we visit companies on a regular basis to see if they have any outstanding needs or they have any interest in growing and expanding, adding new parts to their business. And this is how this project came about during one of our annual visits. So the company investment, they'll be creating 19 new full-time permanent jobs and retaining 47 full-time permanent jobs. The minimum project investment at that location here in the city is $3 million. And their average wage at their jobs is $22 an hour. Their minimum annual payroll will be $2.7 million. And that will be evaluated on an annual basis by Jobs Ohio. We will also be collecting those metrics. So the sales output impact of, this is an annual impact number, is 21 million. And the compensation impact is almost $5 million for that project. We helped them secure historic rehabilitation tax credits on the state and federal level. We helped them secure a Jobs Ohio revitalization grant. And they will also be a recipient from funding from programs that were implemented in the Downtown Redevelopment Districts. So this is, this just gives you an idea of where all the different pieces came from, where the different monies came from, and how we leverage that for the greatest potential output. This is what I call our economic gardening project, growing our own. The most recent expansion of Global Cooling out in the industrial park is a really successful example of growing our own locally. It's located in the Port Authority-owned industrial park, which we also manage for the Port Authority. The company has committed to 32 new full-time jobs with an annual payroll of 1.1 million dollars. They will retain the 82 full-time jobs that they have. And the minimum project investment is 3.2 million dollars for an impact of 25.5 million dollars and a compensation impact of 11 million dollars. In this project, we secured an economic development grant of $150,000 for the company, a Jobs Ohio workforce grant for $100,000, and the roadwork grant that I mentioned before for 228805. A quick snapshot of a few other projects. We actually, as you look at this, this is a much heavier project load than you've seen me present in the past because many of these projects we've worked on for five, three, two years. And they just happened to all come to fruition this year, which is kind of nice. So we had quick loads out there at the industrial park as well. And they have committed to 12 retained jobs and 47 new jobs with a minimum annual payroll of 2.1 million dollars. That has an output impact of 18.9 million and a compensation impact of 4.4 million dollars. Rocky Boots also is doing an expansion. They received a $100,000 Jobs Ohio revitalization grant. And they committed to retain 315 jobs in the Nelsonville location there, 14 new jobs, $5 million a capital investment, $76.6 million in sales and output impact and compensation impact of 23.4 million dollars. Again, those are annual impact numbers. RSQ Compounding, we helped them secure $250,000 Jobs Ohio workforce grant, $100,000 local workforce grant. And they commitments, they had 17 retained jobs, 75 new jobs, and a minimum annual payroll of 3.5 million dollars. Their sales and output impact is 37.9 million and compensation impact 9.4 million dollars. And then we have Athens Mold and Machine. They are actually doing another expansion. And we worked for about a year with multiple parties, including the commissioners and the Port Authority, to help them secure the ATCO building for their expansion. If you're familiar with where they are, the ATCO building is literally five steps out their back door and located there right next to their facility. So they are working, depending on what type of expansion they do, whether it's acquisition of an existing business or expanding their small parts division, they will have between 80 and 200 more jobs. And we are in the process of trying to secure additional Jobs Ohio funding for them. So for those additional, I just had it reflecting 100 jobs, that sales output impact would be 26.2 million dollars and the compensation impact 10.5. A few City of Athens trends in the landscapes. Each of these companies, you'll notice, are in the manufacturing sector. We have been really lucky in our community to be able to secure and help companies expand additional manufacturing jobs. Lots of communities that I've worked with and spoken with recently will tell you that manufacturing is what they would like to most secure, but very difficult these days. Manufacturing is not dead. It just looks a little bit different than it used to. It's a little bit more high-tech. There's more automation, but the jobs still require significant training and people to run the facility. So the average manufacturing wages in the City of Athens are $50,000 a year. And as educational services, social assistance, and retail industries continue to dominate our top sectors, it's important that we continue to do the work that we're doing in securing funding and assistance for businesses that are not population-driven, not considered public agency, and pay living wages and make capital investments in our community. As of 2019 Q2, the total employment for the City of Athens was 14,744. It increased 1% in the region the preceding four quarters. And the average worker in the City of Athens earned an annual wage of $44,445 as of Q2 Looking forward to 2020 and beyond in our pipeline projects, we have a project that we are working on called Project Remote. It will be up to 200 jobs. And the location negotiations are ongoing. And if we land that, what will happen within the City of Athens? We're working with OU and other stakeholders on the ridges and doing some mixed-use development, commercial, and housing opportunities. We're working on some other workforce housing opportunities. And we've been working with the mayor and other parties on the Stimson Avenue corridor improvements. All of the layers that you see there are the things that we've been working on, opportunity zones, and how we can attract more investment to what is going on down there in the Stimson Corridor, the potential regional operations center, mixed-use development opportunities, and non-student housing opportunities. Another part, a very big part of what we're doing right now are speculative buildings out at the industrial park. We've missed 37 opportunities in 2018 and 20 missed opportunities so far in 2019 because we don't have a building to put these companies in. These are leads that came from Jobs Ohio, where the companies were looking for a place to either grow or expand or relocate to. They were interested in Ohio and they were interested in Southeast Ohio specifically. So these are leads that came to us through the Jobs Ohio Insight Network that we weren't even able to submit a single building on. So we missed these opportunities strictly because we didn't have a building. I've been up here, and I've told you that, for many years in a row. So we've been working on trying to address that. Building within the City of Athens, very challenging, not a lot of land available. But what we do have is control of the land out at the industrial park because we run the Port Authority out of our office as well. So we've been working the last five years to try to do the best to leverage that land for highest and best use in job creation with these speculative buildings. So we are looking at two buildings with a total of 167,000 square feet. Building number one is a two-story building with office and specialty space potentially for bio companies that are growing in our incubators. Building number two is 134,000-square-foot building, one-story manufacturing warehouse, shipping, and office space. And if you notice in the diagram, this is Global Cooling Sterling Ultra Cold. So this is Poston Road, the new gem coatings, or quick loads building back there. And so we're talking about building right there next to the recycling center and next to Sterling Ultra Cold. We received $10,740 in funding from the APEX Site Readiness Grant in order to do the due diligence studies that were necessary for the property. We completed geotechnical wetlands, cultural resources, proposed existing infrastructure maps, grading reports. And we had already done the Phase 1 and Phase 2 assessments. So Bill Tyson, to wrap this all together, the Bill Tyson Industrial Park has been selected as one of three sites to receive funding for the development of speculative building project from Jobs Ohio. So we're very, very lucky and happy to have received that. So next steps for that, we will be sending out a request for proposals. And the potential funding sources that we've already been in contact include the Appalachian Regional Commission, USDA, Jobs Ohio, the Rural Industrial Park Loan Fund from Ohio Development Services Agency, and the Economic Development Administration from their Coal Impacted Communities Program. I want to talk a little bit about one of the things that is a hot topic in all economic development regions, and that is workforce. And we actually have a competitive advantage here with our workforce. The regional population, 45-mile commute, we have almost a million people. And the number of employed is 331,614. The number unemployed, 22,182. And the unemployment rate is 14.6. This is the big piece, outgoing commuters, 123,698. I believe that if we have opportunities here, if we have a place to put companies, if they locate here, you would have people who would prefer to work within the community and the region where they're living than outcommute to other opportunities. But people are commuting out of our community to find the job opportunities that what they want because they're not existing on here. So talent retention is important. We know that we have an asset here with the university and Hawking College. And we should be working to capture all of those outgoing commuters. As you all know, it's a very multifaceted solution that needs to be implemented to make this happen, including housing. And so that's why we've become part of that housing conversation. The Downtown Redevelopment Districts, we've got our two districts. They're up and running. We will be capturing 70% of the assessed real property value increase, putting those in the DRD funds that have been earmarked for improvements within those districts. And that is ongoing. I want to talk a little bit about the broadband expansion efforts because a lot of our time has been going towards this in the last year. In early 2017, we talked, we were talking with many different stakeholders in rural Ohio about the challenges with this and the solutions that might be available to increase availability of broadband within our regions. We know that this has hindered directly our economic development opportunities, our citizens' educational opportunities, healthcare opportunities, and many other things. On December 11th and 12th, we will be having a readout with our partners on the full reports of recommendations and what we found over this year-long study. I believe I sent you all the full study, so you're welcome to review it and ask any questions that you may have. I'll do my best to answer them, although I'm not the technical person behind that. We secured Tom Reed from Reed Consulting to do a lot of the technical work on this. So the main, the main next steps moving forward with this is to continue to seek resources for the actual implementation of some of the strategies that are outlined in the document. And very importantly, just as important is to continue to advocate with the FCC, the State of Ohio, and other federal agencies for more assistance and funding to those private companies so that they can make a business case for going into these areas that are less dense of households. Management of the local economic development tools, we are the Tax Incentive Review Council. We are head of that. We pull all of that together every year where we evaluate all of the different tax incentives that have been offered into the community, enterprise zone agreements, any job creation tax credits come before this council, and share information about their, how they're doing and if they're meeting their commitments. We have the two revolving loan funds that we also administer and the US EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant that we have just closed out at the very end of October. A few other programs and initiatives that we did this year. Some of you know and attended the Economic Development Week Familiarization Tour. It was our second annual tour. And we actually received a Silver Award from the International Economic Development Council in the Economic Development, in Innovation in Economic Development Week category. This was really interesting tours this year, visited multiple companies, allowed for the community to see what the projects are, where the jobs are being created, and the companies that are creating them. We did a mock site visit program to identify flaws in sites that might be available and to educate leaders in the community on the site selection process. Chris attended that. I appreciate that, Chris. And we have continued to do our entrepreneurial development group where we do technical assistance and training on a weekly basis. And of course, the Young Athens Professionals. We've reached over 300 working professionals this year with those networking events. Some of our organizational relationships and partnerships. And that's it, because I wanted you all to have a chance to ask questions.
Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. I've enjoyed, during my term of office, I've enjoyed all the things you've brought to council. And I think it's really valuable. I had three questions on three different subjects, and I know I tend to go off, but they're very easy. The first one is, in your documents, when you were talking about employment statistics and things, you had induced employment. And I wondered what you meant by that. And then the second question was dealing with the broadband issues. It seems to me that my memory is that the State of Ohio had, within the past two years, appropriated a lot of money in the State of Ohio for broadband. And at the time, some of us more cynical people had the opinion that this was not going to flow down here to Athens. And I just wondered if you could explain what happened to that money. And the third question deals with the question of the people that are commuting to other places in your employment chart. I noticed that there's a large number of people. It seems to me that Athens has been losing gradually, a lot of people moving to Columbus, where the state agencies have actually eliminated jobs in Athens and sent them to Columbus. I just wondered if there any kind of pushback there that this state is finally realizing that maybe when they're supposed to be serving Southeast Ohio, if they take our jobs away, that perhaps it isn't being done. So those three questions.
Okay. So number one, when you measure a project, you can measure direct, indirect, and induced. And so usually, I come before the council, and I only present what the direct impact is, the direct jobs, the direct payroll. But from my understandings from listening in at meetings over the last year and others that are presenting, they're presenting all of those metrics. So the direct, indirect, and induced. And so I decided I would include that and, but give you all the full report to see where that's coming from. So direct jobs are that company is employing that individual. Indirect are jobs that would be created as a result of that business expanding or locating in your community. And induced are then the jobs that are induced from the first two categories.
Okay, so it's not the public paying for the jobs themselves? It's just consequences of the first two?
Consequences of the first two, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then your second question about broadband. Yeah, I don't know what has happened with that state funding. What I do know is that there were certain requirements for federal and state sources, resources. And we were not qualifying for those in many rural areas, not just Athens County, because the FCC had inaccurate information about our availability of broadband. It was overstated by, let's see, up to 21%. It was overstated because the system that exists right now has the providers filling out a form that says if they serve a certain area. And if they serve, and it's census tract-based. If they serve one, two, or three households in one census tract, they consider that entire census tract served. But our census tracts are not .5 square miles. Our census tract are 250 square miles. This is very different. So they did not build the system to accommodate for rural, real rural numbers. And so that was the first point that we had to make. So as part of this project, some of the partners in the project, which are Buckeye Hills and Ohio University, so it was the three of us, have gone with Tom Reed to Washington to talk about that issue and speak with the FCC. And most of them were not even aware that there was such a discrepancy in what their map said and what the reality was. And so we've been trying to use this information to change that. We didn't expect to do an advocacy piece out of this, but it ended up being a significant portion of the project.
Did it do any good?
Well, we're still working on it.
Let me answer my question.
Something I'd like to share is that, and I mentioned this to council some time ago, was part of this project, part of the survey or the assessing the terrain, if you will, throughout six Appalachian counties that fall under the purview of Buckeye Hills, was to use that Test IT or Test It software or app, which not only demonstrated where there was areas with, you know, zero broadband, even though the census tract is showing, sure, there's broadband here because one household is being served. But it also really spoke volumes to the speeds at which someone might be receiving because FCC standard is 25 meg's down, 3 up. But there's a lot of areas where it's in the kilobit range as opposed to, you know, megabit. What I'd like to do for council is, I've got that map or a link to the map, and I can share it with you so you too can look at it. You can use this map and pretty much land anywhere on Athens County that you want to, and it'll show you. It also flags where people pinged it with the Test It app. So it's invaluable. And I believe that information was shared when you were in Washington DC as well, which is, again, it's invaluable to the lack of broadband that we experience.
So none of that funding will be available until those maps are fixed because that's what they're basing that on. So we're unfortunately having to get those maps fixed and have them reflect accurate information.
And what's your third question about ATCO?
The third question was the commuters, whether there's any effort at this point in time to get the state to kind of send back some of these jobs which they've been appropriating at a goodly pace.
I'm not clear on the government agency jobs. I don't know what their plans are. So they're definitely, I have no knowledge of concerted effort to get those agency jobs back in our Southeast Ohio community. But I do know that as a region, we plan on using these out commuter numbers to attract more business growth here because the biggest challenge to businesses is talent. And Columbus is great. And Columbus 2020 does a great job, and they grow like crazy. But they are squeezed for talent. And at this point, that's, you know, that's why everyone is commuting in. So we, not just myself, but our entire Southeast Ohio region and all of my colleagues, believe that if the opportunities were here, if we had some buildings and sites to put these companies in, they would create jobs that would keep people closer to home.
Other, yes, Councilmember Butler, then Crowell.
Thank you. I'll just be brief in saying thank you for the information and presentation. I think data is powerful, and you presented a lot of it this evening, which is very helpful for us to make informed decisions and to be engaged. But I also want to say thank you because you're fighting to keep jobs in our community. You're fighting to keep people here. And we've seen what happens when people leave. We see what happens when businesses close up shop. So thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome. Councilmember Crowell.
I echo thanks, Sarah and Molly, for being here and your work for the county. I am interested in the speculative buildings you discussed. I don't know how that process works. I assume that you build a shell of a building in hopes that somebody comes in to occupy space? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what speculative.
So you don't know if they need clean rooms or if they are going to need heavy manufacturing or what kind of business might come in there?
We already have some interested parties. So yes, 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 and yes.
Okay. So you're building to what you hope would be an agreement from a business to come in?
When word got out that this was something the Port Authority was going to move forward with, we've had multiple of our current and existing clients and a few others reach out to ask about occupancy. So.
Okay. And I'm curious too about how much space there will remain around Athens-Hawking Recycling Centers? And if they have a need to expand any of their operations, will there be available space?
No.
No?
No. And they were made aware of that when we allowed them to purchase the three acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Katsas.
Thank you. And I do want to thank you for the presentation tonight and all the information that you've given us on our drive. I just want to expand on the building because we have the, you know, the industrial park. But are there other areas within the county? I mean, I just, you know, I think of our landscape and, you know, this is a challenge that we could talk about, but we're not going to level a ton of hills. I mean, are there areas, I mean, I think of Albany. Albany seems to be doing well with some of the areas that they're working with. But are there certain areas that you're targeting that are prime for more buildings?
Right. So kind of development 101 is, one, have control of the land, which we do at the industrial park. Two, know the constraints to development on that land. And that's where we really hit a lot of walls in Athens County. And as Chris could share with you from her time with us last week, having all the infrastructure to the site is key. to the site is key, because that's millions and millions of dollars worth of investment that has to be made. And so although we have pursued multiple other locations as potential parks, business parks, there's either, it's either in the floodplain, it's not available for a price that's even sort of reasonable, or it doesn't have any of the infrastructure that goes to it. So you're looking at millions and millions of dollars of investment just to make it build ready. And so we're working with what we have right now.
Any other comments? Okay. Councilmember McGee.
This is a real quick question. Recently, we've had people come before us for the Bailey's Run, and we've had some comparisons of Athens to some other places. Probably the greatest comparison is to Asheville. I just wondered, when you're doing your analysis for Southeast Ohio and Athens County and everywhere, do you compare Athens to anything as far as what you're visualizing or potential to be to any particular place that we would appreciate?
My role is to look at the data. And the data tells us what we're able and not able to do. Asheville, I was just there recently for an ARC commission meeting, was my first time there. It's lovely. And although there's a lot of the feel there, if you look at our strategic plan from a couple of years ago, that was mentioned so many times that our consultants went ahead and put the comparison in there, and we're nothing like Asheville. They have 300 and some thousand people. They have significant industry. They have, we're nothing like them economically, not even close. So the feel may be similar, but when you drill down to the numbers, that's false.
Thank you.
You're welcome. By the way, there are comparisons and there are benchmarks of communities that are more like us, numbers-wise. I wouldn't be able to pull that out of my head at this very moment.
Okay. Mayor Patterson?
I just wanted to kind of reinforce how hard Sarah Mars is working for Athens County and Molly Fitzgerald. I also want to make note of one thing that I hope council kind of caught when you're looking at the slide deck, is the amount of money that Sarah has been able to bring in from Jobs Ohio. If you look at it, it added up to $1.3 million into Athens County. I don't know what that will look like with Athens Molder Machine, if that's successful. But, you know, I think that the county and the city in particular, we've been fortunate to receive that money. And not just Jobs Ohio, but also ODOT funding and other funding streams that come in for some of these businesses that we have. And I guess the most important thing, as you saw on the slides, is the retention of jobs as well as the expansion of jobs. Stuart McDonald in particular, but, you know, other businesses or companies that you saw up on that slide deck, you know? And that's invaluable to us, because I think the spec building is exactly what we need, because what would happen is a lot of businesses that do want to expand, if they don't have the space to expand into, or a new business coming in, we could potentially lose those businesses as well, because they're going to try to find something that accommodates the growth that they're wanting to achieve. And so I think that this speculative building is a great move. More to come. So thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome. Great. Thanks for being here tonight, both of you. And thanks for all the information. It's very informative. All right, we'll move on to sewer rates.
Sounds exciting.
And a proposed increase. Much more focused conversation. And I believe, Mr. Hetty, do you have some information for us? Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Hetty, City Engineer and Director of Public Works. Thank you, President Nicely, and the rest of council. Glad to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about sewer rates. This year, we'd like to propose a rate increase this year of 8%. And, you know, an increase is needed, of course, to service debt as well as to cover costs. You know, we understand that rig increases are always maybe something that everybody's curious about and why. So a lot of that looks at what we want to do, what we want to be able to do with our employees. You know, since I've been here about a year and a half, I've realized how far a dollar will go. Last year, we had a break out here on College Street out of collapse of a sewer that we fought from February, cleared into March. The cost of that was lower than $30,000. $30,000 is our maintenance and supply budget for the year for our sewer crew. So those unexpected calamities that happen early in the year actually impact us for the rest of the year and stop us from being able to do things we'd like to do. And why that's important is because we maintain almost 400,000 feet of sanitary sewer lines and approximately 300,000 feet of storm sewer lines, so a little over 132,000, or 132 miles of sewer lines between storm and sewer. And we do that with a five-man crew and one supervisor. So that recent repair, we believe we could have been able to lessen the blow or repair it quicker had we had some appropriate equipment. We have a 1990 model sewer vac truck that's, we paid $116,000 for in 1990. It's served us very well. Its replacement's almost $400,000. So as those costs continue to increase, so do our expenses and the need for more revenue. You know, if we continue to give our staff any increase, this 8% increase would generate approximately $147,000. A 3% increase in wages to our staff would take $45,000 of that, so it actually would be $102,000. So buying equipment such as a vac truck, $400,000, and a sewer camera system, about $100,000, that money goes pretty quickly. The other thing we need to do is reinvest. You know, I sit here listening about the infrastructure, and I think we all know to get water and sewer somewhere, it gets more and more expensive. So we have it here, but it's aging. So we need to reinvest in our system to be able to continue to grow. And with those investments, we'll be looking at replacing existing sewers, replacing existing equipment, such as our raw pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. I mean, that project was completed in 2015. We've replaced one raw pump at about $25,000, and we'll have another one here that we're going to try to replace next year. So those continuing costs, you know, take a hit on our budget. As we continue to do projects and improve, we need those dollars also to leverage funding. As we grow, we're going to have to replace our existing sewers that leak. You know, we'd go from 3 million gallons a day on a dry day to about 14 million gallons on a wet day. And a lot of that's because of our old system, our old clay tile. That brings in a lot of grit. That also wears down those inflow pumps. So if we can reinvest and redo our old system, not only will it would help our operational costs, but also help us to expand. You know, if we want to expand to the west, the east, or the south, and some of those areas left where we have developable property, it's going to take some increased capacity for our lift stations, as well as our operations at wastewater treatment plant. So with that, glad to take any questions the council may have.
Councilmember Crowell.
I appreciate the information and the need for additional funds. As you know, we increased our sewer rates just last December. So I'm curious as to whether this will be an annual ask, or what the significant change that happened last December, why we weren't able to look forward to what might be needed in a year?
Sure. My understanding is over the past years, we've looked at, you know, increases as annually, instead of one large increase. The rate increase last year, the base rate, that was done after we sat and looked and evaluated loan payment. This time last year, we were sitting and thinking, could we make our loan payment? Fortunately, we were able to make that on the wastewater treatment plant project. However, we also went back and looked and said, what is that base rate covering? And what we determined is we thought it would be, we need to be able to cover our debt service as well as most of our operations, so that if something happens, we're able to keep that. One of our other concerns is if our use declines, our rate will decline. So that was the base rate, thought last year that we increase that base rate and be able to pay the, you know, the mortgage and keep people on staff to run, as well as keep the lights on. This increase then is to try to keep up with cost of personnel, as well as to have some money to do some design work, to be able to capture some loans. We're looking now at some 0% financing opportunity we'd have for expansion. But in order to capture those and move fast enough, we need a little bit of reserve, as well as we're running with what appears to be not enough spending over the past 10 years or longer. You know, that 1990 vac truck, you know, probably should have been replaced before 2019. However, here we are. We also have seven vehicles in our fleet that are over 10 years old that get used daily. So I think we will continue to have, as those costs increase, that we'll have to increase to keep up with it. You know, we don't make a profit, but we have to keep up enough to reinvest. And we try not to spend the money, but we do try to invest it so that we can save. The dewatering project that we're currently under design, it's projected to pay for itself in seven and a half years. And then after that, we'll save that $400,000 we pay currently for a contractor to come in and dewater our biosolids and haul it to the landfill, so.
Other questions? Councilmember McGee?
Recently, council considered appropriating some money, and I believe it was for the sewer systems and maybe water treatment, but I believe it was for the sewer systems. My real question was, we've had some recent buildings come online in Athens. One was the restaurant out there on State Street, and I believe they had to pay a rather large connect fee to the sewer system. I just wondered how much connect fees are in general? And I just wondered, we have the university building, a rather large building down on Union Street, and I just wondered, do they pay the same kind of connect fee?
Yes. Our capacity fees, Councilman McGee, are set up, basically they're scaled on a single-family home with the assumption that a home uses 400 gallons per day.
Right.
So to build a new home, you'd pay a $1,300 water capacity fee, and you'd pay a $3,000 sanitary sewer capacity fee. And then you'd also pay time and material to actually make the connections.
Right.
And what that capacity fee is basically is to keep the lift stations running, replace sewers as they fail, keep the wastewater treatment plant, replace these inflow pumps at $25,000 for just the pump portion. You know, it's kind of, I always look at it as analogous to, if I was going to build a garage and you wanted to park your car in it, you're always going to occupy that space, then it's your share of that maintenance and that construction of that facility, so.
So when the university builds a building, regardless of the fact that it's on university property, if it's connected to our sewer system, they actually do?
They do.
Pay that money?
Yeah, they paid, yes, for all of them, the recent buildings. We're, HCom, we're working on that calculation now, and it's based on the use. Now, if they had an existing building there, say, say a school, for example, if you had 200 students, you'd put 200 students back, then you don't pay. Because basically, that capacity was already there in the system. Now, if you have a change of use and they added students, then we would do an adjustment. And that goes into capital, then, that money. Actually, the Menards Building is going to, will help with the stormwater side for this back truck that we're looking at purchasing, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butler, and then Reiser.
Thank you, President Nicely. Thank you, Public Works Director Hetty, for being here this evening. This is not necessarily directed at you, but also more so at my colleagues on council. I do want to share with my colleagues that a few years back, maybe in the 2013 era, I received concerns from citizens about living on a fixed income and the challenges of dealing with increased rates. And I know we don't address it that often. It's not every year that we tackle a rate like this. And so I've also heard from previous administrations and previous council members that we had gone for years without any increase in rates, and that it was, that we were undercharging, and we weren't able to keep up with these challenges of an aging infrastructure. So I see the challenge and the balance here, where we have citizens in our community that are on fixed income rates and are challenged with these, you know, the burdensome taxes that do fall their way at times, but also know that we do have an aging infrastructure that desperately needs attention. So it is a challenge that I see us facing here, and I appreciate this request, because if it is left unattended and not addressed, I think we're going to continue to see more and more mounting problems. Thank you.
Councilmember Reiser?
I'm looking at the ordinance that we passed in December 2018, 13618. And, correct if I'm wrong, but you're talking about actually changing the monthly base rate charge. Is that correct?
I believe this one is the actual sewer charge and not the base rate.
Not the base rate? So for residential, it says $4.85. You want to increase that by 8%? Is that what you're saying?
That would be the service charge, if I've got that in front of me.
I'm just trying to figure out, which of these things are we changing?
Hold on one second, Councilman Reiser. So for the majority of our customers who are less than 15,000 gallons of water per month customers, the proposed rate increase would be $1.98. So it would be...
Okay, so that's the monthly base rate charge, then?
Hmm.
The rates here in 1,000 gallons, zero to 15,000 is $24.81?
Currently, yes, after the September 2018...
Well, that's the ordinance I was reading from.
Okay.
So I mean, that's what's in effect right now.
Correct.
That's the law. So that would go up by 8%, correct?
That's the request.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so 8% of $25 is what?
10% would be $2.98, so, yeah, $1.98, yeah.
I never could do math in my head.
Yes, that would be 8% of that 2019 base rate. So it would go from $24.81 to $26.79 for the 4,839 current customers. So that's our largest group.
Is one of the problems that, we have declining revenue, for sure, because I've been in various meetings, and the big thing seems to be is Ohio University. They went out and they plugged up all the leaks, and since rates are based upon usage, and then we figured out, well, if you're consuming this much liquid, then you must be expelling so much liquid. So there's a formula, and you figure that out. Because OU's done such a damn good job of plugging the leaks, it's affecting us negatively. That's kind of a strange thing. I mean, obviously, you want people to conserve resources and do the right thing, but in this case, it's kind of having a negative impact on us, because our model is based upon consumption.
Correct. We have plenty of, we have more capacity to our treatment plant now than we've ever had.
Right.
We can definitely serve any new growth.
Right. You have a well field that could kick out 10 billion gallons a day, and you wouldn't even be straining it. And you have a processing situation now where you could take that water and process it out and bottle it and ship it out. But that's not a problem, though. The problem is, our revenues are declining because our consumption has declined. Consequently, you're going back to the customer and saying, well, we're going to have to raise your rate because someone else is doing such a good job of not using. Is that, am I clear on that?
The university is our largest water and sewer customer, so when they do conserve and find ways to save water, it does affect our revenue. Correct.
So I'm wondering if maybe we should look at a different model of rate increases, instead of coming back to council, you know, after the fact and saying, gee whiz, things look kind of bad, we better ask for another rate. Perhaps we should come up with a model where we're actually saying, well, we have a pretty good idea of what the consumer price index inflation rates are. We could use that as a basis to say, well, this is, why do I have to be next year by that amount? So instead of 8%, this year, it would be something more like one or two... So instead of 8%, this year, it would be something more like 1% or 2%. See what I'm saying? A different way of, I'm getting there, but a different way.
I agree with the concept, I just, we've deferred maintenance for so long that we're, and we're in, if we're in declining revenue, you know, small, single-digit, or, you know, lower end of the single digits may not generally, this rate increase will only net about 100,000 if anticipated.
I appreciate that, I'm just, I'm...
Yeah, I think he's, he's addressing, if I'm understanding, Councilmember Reisner, you're saying, you're not necessarily saying, don't do the 8% right now.
Sure, but you're saying...
But to say, develop a plan where we might be looking at this over a 10-year period and do it on a, you know, something, some other rate.
Better schedule.
On a better schedule, so it's incremental, and might be 1% or 2% per year in those...
Maybe find another customer out there, you know? I mean, Athens bottled water, and there's nothing like it.
Any other questions that we might have from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Kotsas?
You know, and, and I can't, I can't speak for all the members that are up here, but I, I think of this council and how many, how many fee increases, you know, we have done and rate increases and things like that, and I, I do wonder if we are kind of, I mean, myself personally, I am, I am kind of, I'm getting to the point where I'm not comfortable continuing to raise rates. And, and I understand that maybe these are things that we need to consider, but, and this might also go back to, you know, prior times where we weren't considering the rate increase, but, I mean, how many times do we go back to the well? No, no pun intended.
That's a pretty good one.
But this is also, sewer is proprietary, so you're, you're needing to raise money to pay for the expenses.
It's entirely...
So it's a, it's a, you need to bring enough money in to cover your expenses, and that includes the old back truck, so.
And we do have planned projects to invest, because, you know, everybody, well, what are you doing to save dollars? This dewatering project will save money over time, it should pay for itself in seven and a half or less years. You know, we've got plans this year to do some variable frequency drives on the blowers because the wastewater treatment plant is now where we need to focus on electricity use. We did, the water treatment plant now, we're going to cut our electric bill by, to a fourth of what it was. And if we can do things like that to wastewater treatment plant. So that, those are the projects that we are working on, but we're also anticipating growth and needing to use the treatment plant more, you know, to serve, serve the whole community. When we bring in the county, there's a great opportunity there for another funding stream for regionalization, 0% interest, but we, we'll have to be able to do the design work to leverage those dollars as well, so. Of all the departments, or all the pieces of my department that I manage, sewer's been in the worst shape since the time I've been here. Last year, a $7,500 rental payment for a Jetter truck kept us from putting pipe in the ground. So that's how close a margin that the sewer, sewer side runs on, and we're constantly, at the end of the year, looking, do we have enough money to haul out our biosolids or pay our electric bill? So sanitary is definitely the tightest belt of out-of-water sewer streets that, that I manage as, in Public Works, so.
Councilmember McGee?
I just wanted to thank you and the other city employees for their hard work they do. I mean, I've seen you guys out there in the winter nights, and I wouldn't be doing that for the world, so thank you. I do want to say I agree with what Councilman Kotsas has said, and I have some trepidations about the coming year with possible increases in the trash fund as well, so, but I understand too that this is proprietary, and if it needs to be done, it needs to be done, but again, thank you for what you do.
Councilmember Grace?
I want to echo the, the thanks, and, and really, I mean, we, we see a lot of the evidence of aging infrastructure and deferred maintenance, and it ends up costing more in the long run if, if we have an opportunity to get ahead with some of the projects you're talking about. And just also to note that sanitation, water sanitation saves more lives worldwide than about any other endeavor, so it is, it is definitely critical to public health and safety.
Mayor Patterson?
I'd be more than happy to share with City Council some data that the Mayor's Partnership for Progress has pulled together, which reflects the water and sewer rates for 70 municipalities under the Mayor's Partnership for Progress's footprint. I think you'd be shocked to see how low we actually are in comparison to other communities throughout southeast Ohio.
It's been that way for...
It has, it has.
Yeah.
So if you would like to see it, I would love to share it with council, so you can...
Please, please send that. Information. All right. If no other questions, yes?
One thing that probably don't, we don't think about, I don't, I guess I don't immediately jump to, but some of our needs in the, in the immediate future is the West, Stimson Avenue Street project. That's projected $200,000 to replace that five-inch clay sanitary that's in poor shape. The other one would be West Union, that project has some sewer component to it, and then the uptown, the recent funding we have there for TAP, our goal being that we don't cut up a new street once we build it. So we are, we are trying to be forward-thinking, and, and, yeah, it costs money, but we definitely don't want to also have the reputation or the black eye for going back and cutting a brand-new street up if we can avoid it, so.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hetty. Am I correct in, I'm not sure if I'm getting my streets mixed up, but with the Stimson project, am I correct in remembering, you said clay pipes, does North Congress and that part of the city, the north side, also empty into that clay line? Is that, or some of those nearby tunnels?
Congress does not run directly to Stimson. Stimson's got, has its own service, it's a five-inch clay, it's, you know, it's pretty amazing that it's that small, you know, now a main, and you're required to put in at least an eight-inch main if you're going to run a sewer main, so. It does run parallel because it runs down kind of behind where the storm tunnel is, behind the old brick, brick plant, and then it gets down, of course, all of it has to go to the plant somehow, and...
And then you mentioned, you know, storm and sewer lines, and a lot of those sometimes run together and sometimes they run separate.
We hopefully, they're separate.
Right.
We do have, we are working diligently to find those where we dealt from our sampling, from our MS4 permitting, and that's another, if we, right now, we're kind of flying blind without having a tractor amount of camera system. I believe that we could have prevented some of college streets' scale of that, that damage had we had that camera and found it before. The only thing that let us do is map our system because the majority of our stormwater, we have some ideas from old maps. Near East Side is, is one place where, you know, they took Tulane and put it underground, and we think we know where it went. It comes out somewhere down by the library, but discovering where it runs and trying to prevent those things in the future would be helpful, some, some new technology and some new, new equipment, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sure the money will be well spent. Thank you. All right, we'll give you a chance to stretch your legs. We've got Planning and Development Committee coming up, and that's chaired by Councilmember Fall and Councilmembers Reisner, McGee, and Grace.
Thank you. This will be short. As, as you may remember, we have been doing housekeeping and create, we created the Title I to put all our fees and such from all the other ordinances that we have in our code, so it's easier to keep track of and easier to change fees, and this is just doing that for Title 47, 49, which have to do with rightaways. So that's what that is.
Any questions, comments?
I think it's a good idea.
I'm glad for at least one comment. Otherwise, councilmembers are going to be mad for having gotten back down there.
I know. So, that's all I have.
Okay, come on back up. Well, Finance and Personnel, that's Reisner, Butler, Crowell, and Kotsas.
Feel like I never left.
Okay, Finance and Personnel Committee is, comes to order. We've got several bullet, bullet points. The first is prior year's expense municipal court. I believe we have a expert witness here to explain why there is a prior year's expense. It's kind of a fascinating story, so I'll let you explain it.
Good evening, councilmen. Essentially...
You are?
I am Tanya Dai, I'm the clerk of court, municipal court. We are currently under the process of recertifying some of our specialized dockets with the Supreme Court, and through that process, we have discovered that one of the bills that we had for our providers had not been paid for 2018, and also some contracts had not been established for 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020. This was due partly because of the transition from the previous clerk to, to my clerkship. We just weren't aware, I, I was not aware when I came in of this relationship that we had with Hopewell at the time, and that there was an actual contract with money due, and Hopewell never bothered to inform us in the meantime of the fact that we, we did owe them money. I believe it's because of the working relationship that we have had with them, they just assumed that we'd catch up, and I didn't know we needed to catch up, essentially. So right now, we have got two bills that are outstanding that they have submitted to us. One for January 2018 to September of 2018, that's $9,000 that we do have a signed contract And then we have another bill from October 2018 to July of 2019 for the amount of $10,000 that we are currently waiting on a contract as to, to find out, to get that all settled while working on the contract for 2019, 2020. So right now, I would request permission to pay at least that contracted past-due bill, but to also reserve the funds to pay the remainder of 2018 and allocate additional funding of $7,500 into that line item to cover 2019, just because I do not know what the remainder, what the new contract might bring. I don't anticipate a rate increase, but like I said, it's a new contract, and I don't know how that is going to, to go. So I'd rather ask for a little bit more than have to come back in the final weeks of December to try to cover the cost. I know in that particular line item, it comes out of our special project fund, so the, there is not an impact on the general fund, there is money there to allocate, so it's really just now a matter of asking permission and, again, giving my mea culpa to the fact that I didn't know this existed simply.
So you're looking at $26,500 total?
Uh, yes. And some of that we already do have allocated, like, to cover everything from 2018 to 2019, it's only an additional allocation of $7,500.
Oh, okay. So you'll need an ordinance, bring it forward next council meeting? Will you need a suspension?
I would, I would appreciate a suspension of the rules on this.
Well, since it's only two years overdue, I mean...
I'd rather try not to go into 2020 with it.
Reverend Crowell?
Were you able to look at previous years? Has this been a contract that we've had with Hopewell for, for a long time?
I believe it had been. Like I said, the last contract that I was able to see and the last one that we actually do have on file is the 2017, 2018. And when the previous clerk had retired, she had paid through the 2017 portion.
And was that a similar amount in terms of...
Yes, it was, it was $1,000 a month at that point. And during, like I said, during that transition, I was not aware of this contract.
I understand. Thank you.
Reverend Naisley?
Not so much a financial question, but just for my own knowledge, you mentioned this special project, and what, what is it? What does the service, what service does Hopewell provide to the courts?
Hopewell provides services for, for our Sammy Court, our substance abuse mental health court, for our DUI court, and for our diversion program.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Get on to it. Thank you. Okay, 2019 appropriations slash transfers. I assume the auditor has something to say about that.
Yeah, we have several. Getting down to the end of the year.
We got all night.
No, move this along. So we met in our auditor meeting last week, and we talked about a lot of these, so we need to increase the appropriations in the garbage fund for our hauling contract, which we knew would cost more because of changes that were made this year. And we just, early in the year, we didn't really know how much, and we just budgeted what we did last year. In the community center fund, we need to, we're just going to move some money from their 500s into their 100s to make sure we have enough money for payroll through the end of the year. That's $5,000. The garbage increase will be $250,000, which they do have unappropriated. And then the fire department has asked for a, a transfer within their fund, increase and decrease from their 500s, again, into their 2 and 300s. And that is for emergency repair on their bumper truck. And Tanya's already talked about the court issues. And then we have some other ones. I think we're already in the mix. I don't know, maybe you can help me. It seems like there's so many. So, with the Hopewell, I don't know, that might be the only new ones that we don't know about.
I think the government channel would like to make a request.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's the main ones for the ones that you aren't going to be talking about separately because there is the Kimes project and...
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's kind of...
So, yeah. So there's several in the mix, but those would be the ones for the, the basic appropriation ordinance.
Okay. Any of these have to be suspended?
Yes, please.
Afraid to say that. Okay.
Well, you know, it'll, it'll be December when you meet.
Yeah, it is. It's that time of year.
And depending on how long you end up meeting in December, we don't really have much time.
Oh, we have special sessions all month.
Yeah, maybe in the first two weeks, but, yeah. It just, and because of payroll, for example, the community center payroll was a little bit higher this time than we thought it would be, so we need to make sure that money is in there so we can meet payroll and things like that. Just get it in place. It's kind of bookkeeping, if you will.
All right.
Thanks.
Scott?
Hi, I wanted to make you aware of a potential savings, money savings...
I'm listening.
...opportunity. We're looking at replacing our Tricaster, which is our, the brains of the whole operation here for our live broadcast. It's a 2014 machine. It's basically a computer with some fancy video interface card in it. We were looking at purchasing it or replacing it. This past year, it didn't get funded, so coming up would be, next year would be ideal. There is a promotion that came up, though, until December 13th of this year. So if we were wanting to do it next year and we had the money this year that we could find, we're going to save about $13,000 if we could purchase it out of this year's funds by December 13th, be under agreement to purchase, I guess. The total cost, and this is for Tricaster, and I'll include the, the two cameras that we did not replace this past year, $22,300 is, is the total cost, and that would be a savings. If we purchased it next year, we would spend $35,300. If we purchased it next year, we would spend $35,300. So, if we could find the money to do it this year, that would be fantastic. It's going to save us money. And it is a machine. It's given us some problems. It kicked out on us two council meetings ago, and we had to restart it, and it's doing that periodically. It's running Windows 7. So that gives you an idea of what it is. We don't even attempt to do any updates on it, because we just don't want to mess anything up, so.
Any lines out there that you could put together, $22,300?
I'll let the folks that know the lines better than me take a look at it.
That's one way to pass the buck, okay. Oh, mayor, sorry.
When was this equipment replaced last?
2014.
2014?
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking, it's basically a computer system?
It's a computer.
Auditor?
Yes.
You can add your two cents.
You know, I like to do that. We don't really have the money in the general fund, but there is money in the cap fund. And there are account lines for 580, 105, if council wants to do that. I can't think of any place else that money could come from, actually.
You said 580, and what was the other one?
Well, 580, 105 would be the line, yeah, which is council.
Right. Okay. Anyone else? Suggestions? You don't have anything over an engineering, do you? Oh, well, life goes on. Okay, Athens Community Television Contract. We're actually supposed to have a meeting tomorrow, aren't we? So-
Yes, we are.
Are we kind of, do we have things in reverse, then? Shouldn't we have a meeting first and discuss the potential contract, or do you want to hash them out now?
No, I think this is, I mean, just for financing personnel of the state that there, we will be looking very closely at the Athens Community Television Contract.
Well, just let everybody know, I'm on that board. So, I speak for what I know, and essentially, the fees that we collect from the cable company, Spectrum Comcast, what used to be called franchise fees, are in a state of decline. They're falling dramatically because the franchise fees are based on the number of cable television customers, which is separate from people who may have a cable coming into their home and just receiving internet. That doesn't count. It has to be television. That has declined dramatically here in Athens. More and more students come into town, and they don't even bother with television. It's like, I mean, that's like so, so 20 minutes old, you know? Why bother with it? So they just look at everything they need directly off of the internet, you know, with all these Hulus and Wahoos and whatever they're called. Yeah, I'm a boomer. I'm proud of it. So what? There. But that puts us in a financial bind, because our government channel and our community access television operations are part funded from these, this franchise fee. And as it declines, then the money's necessary to pay the rent and new equipment and so on, and pay for operations and salaries just isn't there. So, we're at a crisis. There's no question about it. We need to figure out what the future's going to be. So, that's sort of where we stand.
To add to that-
Yeah.
You know, the FCC's recent ruling, you know, it was a preemption, you know, in terms of the cable industry being able to use in-kind as a way to draw down the money that does come to communities. And so, not to mention, you know, what you're just saying, where it's been declining, it could actually, you know, depending on how much of a stack of in-kind contributions someone's able to put forward, it could go to zero.
Yes, yeah. The way it's going, they'll probably charge us, so. So there we are. It's a tragic situation that we're in, because when the Communication Act of 1994 was originally enacted, everyone thought there was this, going to be this utopia of internet television communications. It was going to be liberating. We would all be joined together in one big happy family of the World Wide Web. And of course, that has just been completely wrong. And I really think there is a place for community television, you know. I think it's a good thing, and I would hate to see it disappear. I think we need to try to come up with some working model.
So we have a meeting tomorrow?
We'll have a meeting, yep. Okay, all the biggie, I love this one, the 2020 budget. I know there's some stuff on our drive that, has anybody read it yet? Okay, not all of it, good. Who wants to fill us in on how things are going?
Well, we've been meeting with all of the department heads, and going as lean as we can within the 500s. Now, it's just a matter of working with the auditor's office to pull all this together, which we'll be working on this week and as we move forward. But it's, please look at what is there already on your drive. You'll see.
So the 500s are the non-personnel costs, and the auditor's working on the personnel costs? And what it looks like from last year compared to this year, is that it's, it is fairly tight, probably flat, compared to what it was last year?
Yes.
How much is left in the general fund at the moment?
$223.
Oh, okay, $223 to last to the end of the year.
Unappropriate.
Unappropriate. And next year's going to be tighter. Wow, that's, that's something. What we look forward to, when's it going to be on our desk to pass?
I should say so.
Okay, good.
The mayor's office has done excellent job doing their part. There's a checklist, the budgets are out on the department head's drive, all except mine. And I don't mean just my auditor's office one, but we do the debt funds and a few other things. And so, we've been working on them, plus the personnel. But it just didn't occur to me we should be posting those as we go. So we'll get those on there soon.
Sure, Councilmember.
Auditor Hax. Titles, please.
This is Pat McGee, city council member, getting my exercise. I just had one question, I think it was last week or the week before, we had before us some statistics showing the interest income that the city earns. And I just wondered, when we evaluate things for purposes of doing a budget, are we, we have some money set aside, obviously, in these bank accounts. Are we including that anywhere in our analysis of how money is being spent? Or is the money only being attributed to the money that's coming in, the expenditures? And if so, is it possible, if we have some increased expenditures, is it possible to withdraw some of the money that's been kind of banked to draw interest? That's my question. Thank you.
So, what happens is, we don't have separate bank accounts for every fund. The money is pooled in several accounts that's in the bank. It's up to, you know, we need a fair amount of money available on a regular basis. Our payrolls run about $340,000 every two weeks, let alone all the other expenses that we might be paying. So we have to keep money available for payroll and to pay our bills. It's really up to the treasurer to look at our balance, and she does. And she'll ask us if we have any big expenses coming up, that we need to leave that money, where we can get to it. Because we can transfer money from savings into our checking or our ACH account, which is an automatic transfer fund, online quickly. And then that money is, the money that we don't think we'll be using for a while, is what she will invest in CDs and things like that. But basically, all of that money, even though it's pooled in an account, in our accounts, it's spoken for. So, like 580, which I suggested for the government channel purchase, has an unappropriated resource balance of $965,000. So, you know, they've got almost a million dollars, but it is pledged to purchases there. We can't just say, hey, they got money in that, you know, in there. Of course, the cap fund, we can use most anywhere, but there are a lot of them like that. There's some grant funds that have hundreds of thousands of dollars in them that we can't just spend wherever we want. So just because we have high bank balances, you know, most of the funds that have money are just, you know, aren't the ones that need it. And, you know, we can't just use money from a corp fund to help out the general fund and things like that. So, we do have a lot of money in the bank, but that would be if you add up, you know, our unappropriated resources are 2.5 million. So that's about what we should have in our bank accounts. But that's all 60 funds that we have, 60-plus funds. So, we can't just use it because it's in the bank, because it might be in our one account or five accounts, but it's spoken for, for separate funds. Does that make sense?
To a degree, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, rather than have a separate bank account for the cap fund, for one for community center, one for recreation, that money is pooled, but we track it in our reports, and we can't just use it wherever, because it really belongs to the different funds.
You have questions concerning the budget? Okay, still on money here, staffing and non-union compensation. Anyone like to speak to that? Do we have updated information on our drives?
It is on the drive.
I brought everything. We, it looks like they've decided to do a 2% increase for the non-union, so there's one ordinance for that. We've been trying to hold everybody to that amount. And I saw one minor change in the staffing ordinance. I don't know if anybody else will look at it and see anything different, but it was just combining a position. Instead of having two separate positions in that one department, it's, one's crossed out and the other says two. And I think that was a result of some of the changes that were made recently among the maintenance personnel for cemeteries and community center. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add to that, but...
No?
Not a lot of changes, just a 2% increase. Really all I saw.
Well, with a tight budget, you can't afford too many changes, is it?
Right.
Okay. Non-union fringe benefits. The clerk of counsel gave me this before we came into session. Auditor's Office Review Non-Union Fringe Benefit Ordinance 2020. Section four, Vacation, Page nine, Part E, remove additional bracket at the end of the first sentence. That's a big change. Current wording, section 13 Sick Leave Donation Leave, Page 18. Current wording states that the donating employee has a minimum bank of 160 hours of accumulated and unused sick leave after donation. And then there's a question, do you want to update this to 240, 288 for fire to match the updated insurance wording?
This is just a list of requests or suggestions by my office, and some of it is just wording to clarify, or often, it's kind of hard to track the wording sometimes in all the contracts and the non-union fringe benefit package to try to get them to match up. So, that's, you know, the mayor's office. Service Safety Director might have some input on the sick leave. But, yeah, that would be a matter of matching up the non-union amounts with the other departments.
And so that we're all in alignment.
Right.
That's basically what we're doing. Changing that language to where it aligns with the union contracts as they continue to move forward.
That's a good idea. Okay. City income tax reallocation. I think we have that on our drive, too. Shoot down to it. Yes, okay. I'm looking at reallocation. We're looking at the general fund, street fund, recreation fund, capital improvements fund, transportation assistance fund. And the way I'm reading here, Part A, general fund is being changed from 72% to 73%. B, which is street fund, 220, from 19% to 18%. C, which is recreation fund, 270, 5% unchanged, capital improvements fund, 580, 3% unchanged. Transportation assistance fund, 214, 1% unchanged. Is that right?
Right. So this is, as you just indicated, it's moving 8% from the street fund into the general fund. A little historical background for council, well, it's not all that historical. It's actually going to happen next year, but you're aware of it. And that is with the gasoline tax increase, the city of Athens' street fund, as well as state highway, will be increasing by $178,000 and some in 2020. And this allows us to redo this mix to where we can draw down a percent, which I believe would be $129,000, to where the street fund will still be to the plus almost $50,000 with this shift in that 1%, where the general fund will increase by $129,000. Is that correct, Auditor Hax? It was, I know we looked at 0.75%, and then we looked at a full percent. And we felt that that 1% with this, this new infusion of the gas tax increase, which I believe was 10.5% or cents, not percent, amounted to $178,000 for the city of Athens.
Okay.
And then in 2021, it will be $179,000. It'll go up slightly.
Okay.
That is that gas tax.
Yeah. So I assume that since there's about a slight 1% decrease, oh, a percentage decrease in the street fund, you're putting together a new list of streets for next year to repay, rehabilitate, but-
We are. We certainly are looking at those that were, you know, rated fours or even fives to some degree. But, you know, if you think about it, in 2016, we were able to increase our paving by, we almost doubled it. And in 2017, 18, and then 19, we increased it even further, to where it was 18 miles of street in 17. I believe it was- I believe it was about almost 19 miles of street in 2019, 2018, and then 2019, this year. It was close to 20 miles of streets. So we've been improving a lot more than we had in the past. But we still have streets to continue to mill and repave and...
Dairy Lane.
We are putting those together. Yeah. Applegate and others. We are tracking, for sure.
Okay. Let me get back on. Okay. Stop-loss medical insurance contract?
Health insurance.
Third-party administrator? Oh, I'm sorry. Health insurance, third-party administrator. Getting ahead of myself. Who wants to talk about that?
I'm sorry, some of these are Service Safety Director items that he's been taking care of. But we have been pretty happy with our current TPA, and so we're going to renew that contract. We've been with them two years, this will be our third year.
Any idea, how much is the contract?
Well, that's kind of hard to say.
That much, huh?
Yeah. I don't know exactly, but I could...
Well, let me find it, you can get the information to us.
I can tell you what we budgeted.
Well, okay.
Didn't write in my reports, sorry. Usually try to. So in our Medical Internal Service Fund, we budgeted, we have budgeted $3.3 million. This year, 3.34.
Questions on that? Now, stop-loss medical insurance contract?
That's that separate policy, which also comes out of this budget, to pay for extremely expensive costs that some, one of our employees might be needing to pay for their medical expenses. So I think, are we up to $125,000?
I believe so.
Somewhere in there. So once it gets beyond that, then that stop-loss insurance kicks in and helps us. So we don't, because we are self-insured, we pay our bills as they come, and they vary from week to week. We might pay $35,000 in bills one week, $86,000 the next. So if we were to start paying $125,000 bills for one employee, we would probably run into trouble in our medical fund. So that's, it's a protection. And I don't know, I don't remember how much that costs us.
Okay.
Like any other insurance.
All right. No questions or any others?
We'll move on to city and safety services, with Councilmember Butler chairing, and Councilmembers Paul and Grace.
Thank you, President Andrew. There's, I'll wait a few seconds here for my colleagues to join me up here at the dais, but I can acknowledge that we have four talking points this evening for the committee, and then that should wrap us up for the night. The first talking point will be addressed by Councilmember Grace. We were approached by Law Director Eliasen about a few issues, specifically the first talking point. So she brought to our attention some concerns going on with the state and changes. And Councilmember Grace is able to address that this evening. Then the next, the following three talking points, just to prep the audience, would be regarding disposal of firearms and then bus disposal from Athens Transit, followed lastly by Mr. Hedy talking about the Kimes Reservoir Project. So first we'll begin with Councilmember Grace, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Butler. So as Member Butler said, this is something that our Law Director Eliasen has been watching. That is, legislation that's passed at the state level that, as we encounter many times, means then we need to adjust our local code to align with state legislation. And this particular legislation involves gun rights. So there are two pieces to this, and the recommendation from our Law Director is that we do adjust our city code to align with one portion, but that we retain and stand up for our home rule authority on the other portion of this. And the first portion, I'm going to read Law Director Eliasen's notes just, and she says, "The law removes from self-defense the requirement that a person defending themselves prove the self-defense by a preponderance of the evidence. After RC 968, the prosecution has the burden of proof." That is, that's the part that we are going to adjust our city code to align, and that is that in a case of a self-defense claim, now the prosecution will be responsible for proving that it was, in fact, self-defense, the prosecution has the burden of proof, rather than the defendant in this case. The other, the part that we're going to deal with and face the lawsuit, should it come, is, and this is one where Law Director Eliasen says, "Law Directors around the state differ on the interpretation of current state law." Well, I guess it actually goes into effect the end of December. But many law directors believe that the state law would allow for hunting and target practice within city limits. And I will be bringing forward the, are maintaining a restriction on discharging of firearms within city limits. Law Director Eliasen and I both agree that it is definitely in the best interest of the residents of Athens that discharging of firearms within city limits stay prohibited. And so that's, that is the update on that. And there's a draft ordinance that I can read if everyone would like, but it's on our drive as well. But it's, that, one whereas is, "Whereas city council recognizes that the city of Athens has home rule authority under the Ohio Constitution, but also that no court has yet ruled on the constitutionality of ORC Section 9.68, the city needs to protect itself against liability." So that is, if we don't align with state code by the end of the year, we're open to lawsuits. So. Any comments or questions on that?
The giant eye roll, you know?
So I think switching from the burden of proof on a self-defense claim is a reasonable and acceptable change for us here in Athens. But to potentially allow the discharge of firearms within the city is not. So I think that's one that, should a challenge come, we will meet that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Member.
Any questions or comments from what Councilmember Grace has shared with us and conversations with the Law Director? I will acknowledge, too, my concerns with the safety facets. We have a large number of people living in close proximity to each other. And to me, it just seems obvious that safety would be paramount and those concerns. Thank you. The next talking point this evening is regarding the disposal of firearms with the police department. This, too, is on our drive. And if I counted correctly, it appears that we have 41 firearms that belong to this city police department that will be disposed of properly and turned in for credit or discount for future purchases. And then we also have 37, I believe, again, if I'm adding correctly, that would be confiscated firearms that we would be also turning in. And this is, I spoke earlier today with Mr. Stone, and he indicated that this is similar to past efforts we've done in turning in firearms properly through this disposal process. Does that sound... Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Grace?
Where do they go?
I don't know.
Where? When we turn them in, to whom?
The last time we did this, it went through a certified dealer that I think a lot of the police departments use in the state. I can get confirmation for you on that in terms of whether we're using that vendor again this time, or if it's somebody else, but I'll talk to Chief Pyle about that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to remember Clerk Walker, was that in the legislation? Do we list that in the past?
Yes, well, it says a federally licensed firearms dealer.
And that's who we used in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mayor. And then the next talking point this evening, which I'll need a little help on, is the discussion regarding the bus disposal through Athens Transit. I was looking through the drive, and I may have overlooked the title, but I wasn't seeing that information, so I don't know if the clerk has it, but thank you, clerk. Thank you, Ms. Walker. So there's a request from the city administration to authorize the sale or vehicle for scrap. And this is a 2013 Ford Goshen Coach with 194,000 miles on it, give or take a few. So.
That's probably the one that we take our field trips on, right?
Possibly.
Old shaky, that's right.
And, you know, with the disposal, there's an opportunity for the city to be proactive and forward-thinking with replacing them with newer and better and more efficient. So that's exciting as well, too.
Yes, council may have seen or have heard that there will be some really interesting changes in our transit system, most notably with an increase in funding from ODOT as well as a grant through the Department of Energy to have Athens Public Transit purchase an electric bus moving forward.
That's pretty cool.
And also possibly electric vehicles for the Athens On Demand, which that, too, has changed, which is fascinating, to where Athens On Demand will be opened up to anyone. In the past, it was restricted to those, you know, senior citizens or people with special needs. But now that's changing as well. That's a $2 fare anywhere in the county. It's a call service you call to have Athens On Demand come to you. It's kind of our paratransit equivalent. So there's some interesting changes coming with Athens Public Transit that I think council will be excited about.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, I'll digress briefly, but related to the topic, I was speaking this weekend with a doctor who lives on the Far East Side, and she said she tries to use the public transportation on a regular basis to come into town to work at the university. And she says she loves it, she's had phenomenal experience, continues to use the services, and is very appreciative that it's offered. So I think we're moving in the right direction. Appreciate your continued support with that program. The last talking point we have this evening before we wrap up and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels is discussion about the Kimes Reservoir Project. So engineering and construction updates from Mr. Bob Hedy, our Public Works Director. I did speak briefly with Andy Stone earlier today. He said Mr. Hedy is the expert on this. There's been some changes since it was under Mr. Stone's watch a few years back. So, thank you, Mr. Hedy.
Thank you, Councilman Butler. The Kimes project is, of course, part of our water system. We have several reservoirs in town, the Kimes Reservoir being one of the large ground, surface-mounted reservoirs. As we started looking at the Kimes Reservoir and its condition, that's when this project was hatched. As we got further in the project, that reservoir actually just supplies water to the booster station that pumps to Blackburn Tank, and then Blackburn feeds that, the rest of the south side of the city. So the critical piece of infrastructure is that booster station. There's a 14-inch water main that comes down Richland Avenue that fills Kimes Reservoir, and then it also feeds that booster station. This project's going to be to completely replace that booster station that's aged and in poor condition. On the top of that, these are submersible pumps. It's the only station we have of that type. We're looking to change that to a more conventional type station, put in three new pumps and actually set that station up for growth. So if we ever have any growth in the southern or region of the city, specifically around any of the counties, the suburbs are going to be built to accept the county flows, will be set up for the future to be able to serve them. So this project, we were able to secure CDBG, Critical Infrastructure Grant, for $130,000 for this. Our match then would be $751,200 on current estimates. That grant funding has to be spent by September of 2020. So that's why we're here today talking about trying to get this project ready to bid and be able to get it under construction, you know, in spring of the year or early summer, to be able to have it built in time to have that money spent.
Thank you, Mr. Hedy. Questions or comments?
Can you just review the numbers again? You said $130,000 CDBG grant. And then the match is what, how much?
$751,200.
$751,000, okay. So it's the usual, it's the flip-flop of the usual. We usually are paying the 20%, this time we're paying the 80%.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Patterson, thank you.
I'd just like to emphasize what Director Hedy was saying, and that is that, you know, there is the potential for the city of Athens growing out in that direction and being proactive and getting this thing up to par. I mean, we've kind of struggled on and off with the Kimes Reservoir in the past, as council is aware. And so to really finally make a major improvement to this, and again, not just for now, but into the future, if we do start to see increased demand, whether it's, you know, things up at the ridges or Tier Two, or, I mean, who knows what could be happening in the not-too-distant future. Just being savvy.
Agreed. And if I may echo some of what's being said regarding the pursuit of grants, so thank you, Mr. Hedy, for acknowledging the CDBG grant. I think we're fortunate and lucky that we have administration that is aggressive in attainment and pursuit of grants to help us with our aging infrastructure. So again, thank you for the heavy lifting on that end. Yes, President Nicely?
One other question, does that, so that's a close-to-a-million-dollar project. Will that take care of Kimes, or are there other things? I know it's been, it's always been on our tour, that it's always been in need of repair.
Based on current water modeling, the Kimes Reservoir volume is not needed for our current needs. It actually causes some water age problems because we pump from Kimes to Blackburn, and then it sits in Blackburn, and in Blackburn, we need a standpipe. A lot of that water is only used to hold up the rest of the water. So that elevation is used to create pressure. So based on what we're looking at now, that in the future, we could possibly take the reservoir offline and actually do away with the reservoir. But this booster station cannot be done away with because it pumps the water up from the pressure there at that elevation to be able to serve all the Blackburn region. So yes, Kimes is, this is, we started looking, putting money into the actual old reservoir, and it looks like it's a better place to spend our money in the booster station because it's the linchpin of the system, on-out end of the system. It'd also help our water age problems and some of our disinfectant byproducts we have to worry about. We don't typically, or currently have a problem, but we could in the future. And that's, you know, chlorine in our water reacts with any organics, and you can end up with, the most common one's chloroform that actually is produced, and then you have to put in a system to oxidize it away. So we're working towards... We're working towards, with the future in mind, this, we're looking at three pumps for a couple of reasons. Right now, we're running into issues with lean manufacturing. We order pumps, and it's taken, it used to be a couple of weeks, now it's taking months and months. The one I referenced before, the wastewater side, I believe we ordered that pump in May, and we're still waiting on it. So if we put in three, we'll have more redundancy, plus we'll actually have more capacity if we have growth, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mayor?
No, just thinking, you know, in my conversations with Service Safety Director and with Director Hetty, you know, in the ideal world, you know, Curtis and Kimes, you know, if they were tied together somehow, would have allowed for being able to exercise the Kimes Reservoir more often, but it's an issue.
Thank you. Thank you, President Nazir. That concludes all the talking points for this evening's City Safety Services Committee. Thank you.
All right, then we'll stand adjourned at 8:53. Thanks.